Well, as you're pulling that up, thank you again for having me back. I love to come and talk about this stuff with folks who are actually interested, unlike my family. So I've titled tonight's presentation Financial Opportunity and Tax Increment Financing. So I think that's really what we're trying to drill down on for the town of Scarborough here. And what I plan to talk us through is first, a very brief introduction and then get into tax shift benefit, what it is and how it works, and talk through some scenarios of how that, how the tax shift benefit is implemented and can work. And then I will start to get into how TIF revenues can be spent under the TIF statute. And I'll hand it on over to Karen as she's done some work in terms of looking at the town of Scarborough's budget and sort of how the statutory requirements and the budget items that you already have marry up. So many of you have seen this introduction slide, but really just to frame this up for everybody, we're talking about tax increment financing. It's an economic development tool available to municipalities whereby you can designate an area in your town as a TIF district and it essentially freezes the value. And all the value that is paid, all the value that is added, rather, to the district from that point forward during the term is what's called captured value. And the taxes paid on the captured value can be put aside in a development program fund for special projects related to economic development. At the end of the TIF district term, you've got all of that value back onto the general fund tax rolls. And so that's one way we try to illustrate how TIFs work. And I also just want to orient everyone to the district that was brought up in the introductory remarks, Scarborough's Downtown Omnibus TIF District. It's a significant sized district compared to any other that the town has had before and presents a significant amount of opportunity for the town. Okay, so let's get into tax shift benefits. So many of you have heard me say this introductory part before, but let's put TIFs to the side and talk about state valuation for a minute. State valuation is your total amount of value in the town and it gets equalized across the state at the state level so that your assessment ratio can be adjusted across municipalities. And the state wants to do that to set some equalized state valuation for each municipality so that they can use that in various formulas. Three of the most important formulas where it's used is in calculating the state education subsidies, the revenue sharing subsidies, and then your county uses it in determining how much county tax each municipality pays to the county. The theory being that as you grow in your value in your municipality, you have a better ability to pay for things on your own. You don't need as many, as much subsidy and you can pay more in county tax. Lots of other things going into those formulas and so, which I'll get into. But the important piece is that in a tax increment financing district, the value that's captured in a TIF is not counted toward the state valuation. And as a result, and we'll get into this, the town doesn't experience financial losses of a portion of that new tax value that it otherwise would. So that's, that's really what we're going to be talking about in more detail. Before we get into that, I just thought I'd talk through these three components of financial impacts for the municipality. And general purpose aid is, is one of those. So the state, there's a statewide education mill rate that is created at the state level by the Department of Education each year. And it is applied to the average of the town's last three years state valuations. That is, that math problem results in the amount of the essential programs and services budget that the town will be responsible for paying. And then the difference between that budget and the amount the town's responsible for paying is meant to be the amount of the subsidy. There is an exception to this, which many of you are familiar with, which is the minimum receiver status. So to the extent a municipality has a relatively high special education cost compared to your subsidy calculation, sometimes municipalities are then bumped up in their subsidy amount to a percentage of the special education cost. When that happens and when that, what's, when that's called minimum receiver status, then the state valuation for the community is not actually driving your general purpose aid amount. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that, but because the town of Scarborough has been in minimum receiver status and is no longer in minimum receiver status, it changes the impact of capturing value in the TIF district or not. Remember, you can interrupt me. So if I start, no one said a word, so, yes, yes.
So you are going to cover like what created the shift from the past year and why we moved out of minimal receiver status and?
So I'm, I'm not going to cover that specifically. You know, and, and maybe Tom could speak to it a little bit, the dynamics that led to it. And if not, we can certainly get back to it. But it does have to do with the percentage of the essential programs and services budget that is comprised of special education costs and its relative amount to the subsidy that is otherwise calculated in the, in the formula.
I actually would defer to Council Clucci. He's really become, I think it's a bit of a hobby or an interest, it seems, but he's really become quite adept at understanding those mechanics. And I think better than I could succinctly describe what occurred in this last year that brought us out of that status.
Well, I mean, this year is because the governor increased the funding for, for education. So she moved it to closer to 55%, which we were teetering on the line of that mill rate applied versus what our special education last year was. They were pretty close to each other. So that just put us over the edge this year. And that could change in, in the future, but I don't think it'll change in the near term anyways.
Yeah, my understanding is that the, the town has been in minimum receiver status, but not by a huge margin, right? So it's always sort of on the edge and it has a real big impact on the tax shift impact. So, which we will get to that.
I hate to try, I had a question. So let's say that we, we have our TIF district and we don't allow another building to be built in the next 10 years. We're still capturing value because when we do a reassessment, the original value is going to be the original value, right? And I guess I'm trying to really make a point or reaffirm this, but. So there's benefit, even if you're not going to grow, to capturing value because essentially free money.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting point, particularly with a really large district. You're going to see some increased assessed value, even if you don't see a significant amount of development. And, and a significant portion of the district is already developed, right? So you're not going to see a change there in terms of development value, but you will. And Nick can talk, speak to whether, you know, what the amount might be of just sort of relative, you know, regular inflation, I guess, of assessed values.
And in fact, I don't want to get into the weeds, but the timing of the downtown district happened to coincide with our, the town's revaluation. And with that knowledge, the council at the time decided to, and the state statute allows for us to, to call out and say, we want to use a certain date as our starting point. And the council chose to use purposely a date that already had the increased values as a result of the revaluation included, because there would have been kind of an intrinsic, almost windfall value created by virtue of the revaluation in year one, essentially.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that can confuse a lot of people, but we, we have an original assessed value date from the statute that was here. And we decided we're actually going to, for, for measurement purposes, we're going to start here because this is after revow. And we wanted that amount to be available, the council at the time wanted that amount to be available to the general fund. But there continues to be increased assessments over time, not by virtue of development.
Right, over the term of this TIF district, there'll be three, four, five revows potentially. And so that.
Well, I'm saying, because you know, prices are up, what, 25% this year, somewhere's around that. It, it's substantial. So the next time we do a revow, it'll be a pretty big impact, I think.
Great, okay. Um, so I was just going to speak to the formulas for county tax and municipal revenue sharing, just briefly. County tax is a very simple formula. It's entirely, the town's proportional share of the county budget is entirely based on the proportion of the town valuation compared to the rest of the county. So that's, that's a fairly simple calculation compared to education aid. And then revenue sharing, that calculation and formula, it also has lots of different inputs. The, the kind of general relationship still holds as you have more value, you get less revenue sharing than you otherwise would. But there are other components that go into that, not the least of which is how much the state decides to provide and in a total sense, so. So I, you maybe remember me providing a dollar sign slide before. Based on this year's data, this shows how much of every dollar in new tax revenue from a new development is lost over time to these state, these tax shift losses. And based on today's data, assuming that the town, you know, today the town is not a minimum receiver, that 49% of every new dollar, 49 cents of every new dollar is lost to losses in the education aid subsidy. And then there's, there's also some impacts related to county tax and revenue sharing. But by, the largest part, of course, is state education aid. So it, it is about 58 cents that's lost out of every new tax dollar to tax shift losses. And this is the state where you have not captured this value in, in a TIF district. And just as a comparison, the next slide shows, let's just say the town was a minimum receiver this year. There would still be a tax shift loss. It would just be related to the county tax and revenue sharing subsidy components. So you, you don't experience a significant amount of losses in that scenario. So the next few slides are trying to give you some more visuals to explain this dynamic. And so what we decided to do was talk about a hypothetical $10 million project that could be located in one of three areas. The first area is in the Downs CEA area of the downtown TIF district, where it's subject to a credit enhancement agreement. The second scenario is you're in the downtown TIF district with this $10 million project, but it's not subject to the credit enhancement agreement. And then the third scenario is this project is not in a TIF district at all. And this is today's TIF district where there is a 40% reimbursement under the credit enhancement agreement. And then the rest of the TIF district has a 3%, well, that area and the rest of the TIF district has a 3% capture for municipal purposes. The rest of the increased assessed value in the TIF district is going to the general fund, just like you would be if you were outside the TIF district. So you can see in the Downs area, subject to the CEA, that scenario has about $60,000 of the new tax revenue going to the credit enhancement agreement payment. You've got about $49,000 that is lost in the tax shift losses because you've got a significant amount that is going to the general fund. And then you've got a net benefit to the town of $40,000. And that is what's available mostly in the general fund, but a component of, a small component of that amount is going to the town TIF Development Program Fund, available for the couple of projects that we did get approved in the first, in the TIF district when it was originally designated.
Do we know, maybe this is a question for Tom. What percentage of the downtown TIF is in the Downs?
Roughly half. It's about 1,000 acres and the Downs is about 500 acres.
Okay.
And Shauna, the, it would be about, what, $1,200 out of that $40,000? Because the, the 3% capture is not on your bar graph here, correct?
Right, I didn't, I didn't separate that out. You, you will be able to tell, but yeah, it's a couple thousand dollars. Yeah.
Of the 40, a couple thousand is the.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah. So then the second scenario where we're in the downtown TIF district, but we're not subject to the credit enhancement agreement. Then you've got $83,000 that is lost in the tax shifts and you've got a net benefit of $65,000 to the town. Similarly, a very small amount of that is subject to the, is, is actually TIF revenue and has to be used for economic development projects and the rest is general.
So, sorry, these may be really elementary questions, but when we say a tax shift, what's a shift from, from where to where?
So it is a tax shift from the town. So I guess when you lose the revenue from a new tax dollar, new tax dollars, you are losing revenue sharing and education aid and adding county taxes. It's a shift of responsibility to Scarborough financially for its own purposes. And it makes that revenue that's available in those subsidies available to other municipalities. It, you know, to the extent that the town didn't experience that.
The other way to characterize that red block is those are dollars lost to us. In the case of general purpose aid and also revenue sharing, those dollars are redistributed to other communities under the formula. In case of county tax, we're paying more county tax than we would have to otherwise, essentially.
Yeah, so other communities otherwise would have to pay a little bit more, but.
So it goes to the community, but it doesn't go to the municipality. It goes to the Downs, which is in the community, no?
No. No, these are actual dollars lost to us by virtue of the fact that we're not sheltering them.
I'm going to stay with Don's point. It does sound kind of simple and I think I've almost grasped it. So I'm going to try to put it simply for me, see if I'm right. So the higher that we, as we hire and value, we get less revenue sharing from the state. So that's lost dollars.
Right.
The higher our value, the less dollars for education we get from the state. So the dollars we're getting from this new development is getting lost because we're, we're back feeding these losses because of the higher value. Does that sound, I know it's kind of simple.
No, that's right.
That shift is, it's important.
Yeah.
And, yeah, great. And just to clarify this too, so it, because we're out of minimum receivership, this shift has just started to occur. Right, so now the question is because we're out of minimum receivership, we're getting penalized for every new value we're creating. So should we shelter some of that value? Right, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, that's right. It's also important to keep top of mind that, that you're always coming out ahead. You just are losing some percentage of the new value.
Yes, right.
Because that can trip people.
Remember back to the dollar sign slide. So essentially 58% of every new tax dollar paid, we're not taking advantage of.
Can't spend it because it's going to the state or the county.
That's right. That's where the shift is. It's going to, that, that money that would otherwise be here.
For us.
Is, yeah, is available to everybody else. Okay, yeah, so, so the second scenario, as I said, is, is the downtown TIF, but not in the CEA area. And then that last scenario is where the $10 million hypothetical project is not in a TIF district at all. And you can see it's very comparable to the downtown TIF scenario simply because there's only a 3% capture. So you have a slightly more red area, slightly higher red area because you don't have that 3% captured and shielded from the tax, from state valuation. Okay, so the next set of, this bar graph is the scenario. And I'm not making any proposals here, but this is just for purposes of, of giving you the contrast. This is a scenario where the town would have chosen to capture 100% of the increased assessed value in the entire downtown TIF district. And so it's the same thing where a $10 million project comes in. The first scenario is it's located in the downtown TIF district and is subject to the 40% CEA. And you can see there's no red in that scenario because we are able to retain the entire amount of new tax revenue that's paid, except for the CEA payment. So the CEA payment goes out in this scenario and then there's $89,000 left, all of which is subject to restrictions on spending. It must be spent on approved project costs under the TIF statute and, and the town's development program. The second scenario here, right in the middle, is where this project is located in the downtown TIF, but not subject to the CEA. So you've got $148,000 available for TIF approved projects. There's no tax shift losses associated with that amount. And then you've got the not in the TIF district scenario for this $10 million project. That is, looks the very same as it did in the other prior slide where you've got a, a tax shift loss of $85,000, $86,000. So the next slide just puts these two together so you can see them right next to each other. And I think this is just helpful to, to compare the two scenarios. Obviously, as I said, the scenario of not in the TIF district is exactly the same. But if you are capturing 100% versus 3% in the TIF district, you can see the impact. It's, it's $48,000 in the CEA area and it's $83,000 in the rest of the downtown TIF. And the crush of this is, and we'll get to this, is in order to be able to keep all that revenue, we need to have ways under the statute to spend it that are, you know, priorities for the town. So we'll get, we'll get to that as well. Any, any thoughts or questions, comments on?
If I remember correctly, from the, the current filing we have with the state with the omnibus district, we've only defined two, two approved. We, we can always go back and edit it and amend it and do it, but we can, we can add to that list of projects. But can you remind me what the list of projects is right now? It's SEDCO and traffic?
Economic development programs, which includes SEDCO. And then there's some traffic related improvements related to the TIF district. So Karen, I don't know if you want to.
Okay, yeah, so we only, our list of things that we apply for is two.
Yeah.
And, but we, our list could be eight or 10 or what have you. And that's the discussion we're trying to have in a couple of minutes.
A lot of large TIF districts where there is a significant amount of capture, in this case, there's only 3%, so two projects was perfectly appropriate. But, you know, there are 20, 25 list of, list of projects in the development program. And remember, that is just a menu of options. Every year, the town council will have to decide in its budgeting process, you know, similar to the way you do your general fund budget, what are you going to use the TIF funds on and do a TIF budget?
And we've never done that yet. We have, so we haven't touched any of those. So I forgot what the number is, but there's.
It's less than 60,000 that's been accumulated today.
But over three years, there's been 60,000 that, right now, we'd spend it on either SEDCO or traffic. Right?
Yeah. So just, just in theory, right, trying to like put this together practically for budget. Like this year for budget, we funded SEDCO out of the general fund for the most part. But in theory, in the future, if we found out what that percentage was, that was the right percentage, we could fully fund SEDCO out of these excess TIF revenues that would be sheltered. So it would be, like, that wouldn't go to the taxpayer. The taxpayer wouldn't have to pay whatever the .001 penny it is for SEDCO, because it would be essentially, you know, that's not a real number, by the way. I don't know what the number is. I'm just saying it's a small amount. But again, we could use those funds in the future to fully fund SEDCO, assuming those funds were coming in at that level where we could dedicate that money to funding those types of operating things in the budget.
That's right, yeah. Yep, you're getting ahead of us, but yes.
This question might be a little bit off track here, but I'm trying to visualize the, the downtown TIF and the, when we say the Downs, the Downs area, that's the crossroads planning district? The same thing? Is that the same thing?
It happens to be, oh, there's a, maybe 50 acres is different.
Okay.
But essentially, yes.
And that goes basically along Route 1 and then?
If you look, yeah, so it's, it's the, it's the big purple blob that kind of moves north to south on the, on the plan as shown.
Yeah.
That's essentially depicting the, the Downs property, the 500 acres.
Yep.
And then we've connected it along the Route 1 corridor and some distance back from that. And then Oak Hill proper, if you will, including this campus that we sit on. And then extending on the other side of the Oak Hill intersection down to, is it? I think it's the Main Men Campus, Campus Drive?
Not quite, but close, yeah.
So when we're talking about shifting, could you just go back a minute, the map? If we could, we're talking about taking monies and trying to apply them to the rest of the downtown TIF, to that sort of horizontal shaped part of the map.
Well, we'll get into that. I mean, the, the statute spells out what you can use TIF revenues for. The easiest, the easiest lift will be expenditures within the district that are qualified. But there are circumstances that you can spend those monies for costs and, and things outside of the district if there's a relationship. And that's some of the work we've done to help illustrate where we think some opportunity is. Yeah.
Right now, right now.
We're ready. So wait a second, do we have now?
Well, so. So Tom just sort of got us started here, but there, there are four categories. I usually only talk about three, but in Scarborough, we get to talk about four. Four categories about the ways in which TIF revenues can be spent under the TIF statute. TIF statute breaks it into these components. The first tier is projects that are inside of the district. They're called project costs, which is why I see that language. Project costs that are located inside the TIF district are much more easily qualified under the statute. So the credit enhancement agreement is an example of that. That is funding or finance, helping to finance improvements inside the district that are related to economic development. The tier two projects don't necessarily have to be located in the district. They need to be directly related to or made necessary by the TIF district development. So we can talk a little bit more about, as we get into Karen's part of the presentation, what projects fit into that category. And then tier three is somewhat of a catchall. There are, I think now, 10 different subcategories of things that this legislature has decided can be funded anywhere in the town through any TIF district because they think that that is economic development, important enough economic development linked projects. So the, the SEDCO piece is, falls under that, economic development, departmental cost, that kind of thing. And there's a very, various other things that we'll get into a little bit later. Tier four is not very commonly used, but it is cost of facilities or buildings that are leased by the town and are located in a downtown TIF district. And so we can talk a little bit more about that specifically here as well, yeah.
So does that mean the cost of building the facility or the cost of the lease?
Yeah, I think we need to flesh it out a little bit. I, I'll be totally frank with everybody. I have never seen it used in my 16 years of practicing TIF law. I'd be surprised, I, I don't know of why it came to be, must have been used somewhere. So I expect to have conversation, continue conversations because a few years ago, we did start conversations with the ECD about the use of this project in, in this particular district, just thinking in the future. And so we'll, we'll talk about that. The language of the statute is cost of buildings. Let me find it so that we can.
And she's finding that we purposely put in place the downtown TIF district because that's the only one allowed under state law where tier four applies. And so we really wanted to preserve this option. As Shauna said, I think we need to do a lot more work with ECD before we commit to something, but I think there's tremendous opportunity. And I mean, let's face it, you know, what we knew is the Downs was on its way. We had a well, a good sense of some big capital needs the town had. And the thought was this might be an option for us to be able to finance that going forward, at least during the period of the TIF.
Shauna, just, just to be clear, like, once these things would be approved, they're approved. So that's kind of your job to put the application together. So we would know well in advance before we spent money on these if they were approved, right? Because once we set the application and it makes it on the list, we're good to go in the future. Whether we fund it or not is a different question.
Yeah.
Right, but we wouldn't be rolling the dice on things because they would have to approve it and add it to our application.
We would not commit to a lease with an expectation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not even talking about a lease really. Yeah, yeah, I'm not even talking about a lease, really, I'm just talking about even tier three.
Or any of them, correct?
Right, yeah.
But that in particular, we would not commit to a lease without a clear understanding of our ability to use TIF revenues to support it.
Yeah, part of the reason they would allow this this exception, if you will, is because it's still going to be a privately owned structure, right? We're just, you know, so it's a business and we're leasing it from them. So and that's the purpose of the TIF to begin with, is to create new value. And so that's sort of a little bit of an exception. Hey, well, it's municipality, you can't build and own your own stuff. But if you're leasing something, you're basically, you know, contributing to economic development.
So can I throw out another hypothetical scenario of would this qualify? So we know for the downtown area, we're thinking about the the, why can't I think of it right now? The grandstand and how that could potentially be lease space for the town in the future for some some use. So technically, in the future, if we decided to go down that path where the town wanted to use that space with an intention of of supporting municipal services, this would be covered under tier four, where we could use the TIF revenues to fund the lease for whoever owns that actual structure.
Yeah, and that gets me back, yes, and that gets me back to your question before about is it the lease payments or not? And and the language actually is cost of constructing or improving facilities or buildings leased by, it's actually state government or municipality that are located in downtown TIF. So we'll have to, so we'll have to work it out, but there's a there's a potential path there.
It sounds, the way you read it, that the renovation cost would be covered, the lease would probably not. But that the the other thing on that point, I know you didn't want to talk about tier four, but it kind of clicked with me after our last session, was to, you don't have to file an amendment with DCD for a new CEA, right?
Uh, no, because it's an omnibus district and we put language into that original approval that the council could can approve credit enhancement agreements.
So the only approval to do something in tier four, I think, would be local?
Oh. If it was a credit enhancement agreement to a business who is building something, then that would qualify, you know, in the already approved omnibus capacity. Otherwise, if we're going to use this particular project cost, because in that scenario, then tier one applies. It's improvements in the district, it's a credit enhancement agreement. We've identified that as in in the development program already. But I think this particular piece, we have some work to do to kind of make it fit.
And under that scenario, it would require creation of a new credit enhancement agreement with an entity or amendment of an existing one. But we purposely sought and received approval from DCD to, at the local level, approve additional CEAs. Is that correct, Shauna?
Yes.
Yeah. So you're right, that's a local-only decision.
Just like, how often could we go back and and change the list of projects or things that we would want qualified? Is that something we could do annually? Again, not that we would, but like if in the budget process or something, as we look forward, is that the time to identify projects that we would want to see probably more in our CIP? We may need to go back to the state, add these projects to a list to make sure that we can use those as qualified initiatives under under the law?
Yeah, so I I would suggest the town try to do an amendment of the district that creates a laundry list that's sort of forward-looking, so you can pick in your budget process from a list you've already conceived of. And and so my job is usually to try with with town staff's help to figure out what could possibly qualify that the town might consider not promising to do them, so that you'll have the authority when you need it, because it is a process. It's a there's a public hearing that's required. Documentation needs to conform with the rules and regulations of the TIF statute. And then the commissioner needs to issue an approval letter. It's not overly onerous, but it is a process that I don't know that you'd really want to do every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, just appreciate when you establish the percentage that you want to shelter for this purpose. If we we actually create on the books a special TIF revenue program development fund, like we have so far, that fund is accumulating funds. We've not spent any yet, so there's no kind of requirement. When we do spend them, they can only be spent on the qualified and approved purposes. So that's another way to look at it. I wouldn't want to think that we would do it as frequently as annually, but for instance, if we do something and all of a sudden we slide back to the normal receiver status and our circumstances change, that might be a a sort of scenario and a and a reason for wanting to kind of reconsider what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Sorry, I was just going to suggest, after Don's question, let's maybe move on to the next slide. I just want to make sure, I am, I'm going to be a little bit of a chair and move on.
I don't want to go back to the Stone Ages, but there's a part, so I, so bear with me just a minute. So I kind of get the whole, the whole minimum receiver, you know, factor there. But there's a part of this that is puzzling to me, because it does seem that we're, you know, whether these funds are, you know, sheltered or go to a, you know, downtown district or a TIF district, it's still, it seems the benefit to the TIF in my mind is that it just makes it easier for the municipality to use those funds more freely. Is that a fair statement? Rather than, otherwise, you could still do the same thing, but you'd be going for other sources of funds, right? You wouldn't be coming directly, you wouldn't be taking the cut out of the taxes before it goes to the town.
Well, I think there's two differences. One, you're losing fifty-eight cents on every new dollar. That's the biggest reason. And I would actually say it's the inverse. This limits what we could do with the money, and that's one of the arguments that the prior council put forward, is that we don't want to restrict ourselves, let's flow it to the general fund. Let's decide as a council and as a community how we want to spend these. We don't want to be bound by the statutory limitations.
I see, so and the fifteen percent is the limit, that's the limitation? What's the difference between the fifteen percent share?
Fifty, fifty-eight cent? Fifty-eight cents on every new dollar? That that's the most compelling reason in my mind.
But but just to clarify, in that situation, when the council made that decision, we weren't getting the fifty-eight cents of the.
Fair enough, yeah, different scenario.
So that's maybe why back then it was.
And and as Council Chair Johnson raised, that was in the middle of the CEA discussion, and that was all-consuming. And frankly, the council at the time kind of needed to set up the district and its basic parameters, didn't have the time and attention to really kind of had this discussion. And it wasn't really as valuable as it is today, frankly. So here we are, three years in, and we're having it.
So I just want to make one final point. So when I I went back and read some other documents, some policy documents about TIFs and CEAs from Sun Foundation, I'll give the quote to you, but I'll circulate the document. But it seemed like, and stepping out of Maine for a moment, it just seemed like the the original purpose of a lot of the TIFs was to to address blighted areas in large urban centers, you know, that seemed to be, and it's talking about bigger cities situations there. So it just, you know, we don't really have that here. I mean, we're not really, you know, dealing with remediation, environmental remediation or whatever. We're not dealing with, you know, issues like that. So it does seem that we have a different, I mean, better set of circumstances than than dealing with a major metro or some other things that maybe TIFs were intended for originally.
There, in the main statute, there is language regarding blighted areas, environmental improvement projects, you know, kind of that have come about because of economic development projects. So those themes are there, it's more flexible, as you said. Many, you know, the requirement, as opposed to requiring a property to be blighted to be in a TIF district, there needs to be a certain percentage suitable for commercial development, because it's a it's a broader goal in in the main statute than the original, some of the original inception. I mean, the states, state statutes across the country are very, are quite varied. So I don't know what the status of them all is now. It it occurred to me, one of the other comments you had made reminded me of a criticism I have read about TIF districts, where the sort of process around expenditure of TIF revenues is not robust enough and as compared to the rest of the expenditures that the municipality has to make. And that I don't have a a concern about in in Scarborough in particular, but anywhere, because you've got appropriation requirements legally, whether it's TIF revenue or general fund revenue. And I do think it's important to kind of have a clear process, as I know, you know, Town Scarborough would, about, you know, what are we spending? Are we spending TIF revenue for this project? Are we spending general fund revenue and and tracking that, just as you would any other revenue?
We do have to, we do have to get through a little bit here, so. But I called Chair, I called Chair like five questions ago.
It's kind of a random question.
Oh, great.
Well, it was it was just something we're saying that we're just making.
Don's on deck while this is on.
Is, you know, and again, maybe we don't need to answer it and put it in the parking lot. But, you know, down the road, assuming we do this and assuming we want to make a big expenditure based on these TIF funds, if it's over four hundred thousand dollars, does it need to go to referendum or do we have the authority based on the TIF law that we as a council or whomever can can authorize those funds for that use without having to go to the voters?
Yeah, I don't I don't think there would be a distinction between TIF revenue and general fund revenue when it comes to that charter requirement.
Okay.
As the charter currently is written, it would, anything above four hundred thousand in appropriation, regardless of source of funds, requires overapproval. The Charter Commission does have recommendations around that issue, and this council, I hope, will take it up over the course of the next six or eight months.
Okay, go.
Okay. These are unauthorized projects under the statute, these categories. And I just highlight it because I think some of the things that have been discussed around the potential town lease come up here. So you can see there are some tensions in the statute. We need to sort through to really make sure we've got a path for whatever project might be created here. But the idea here is that the legislature didn't want TIF revenues to be available for general governmental, if needed, to have a connection to economic development. Okay, the last slide for me is just funding project costs. And I think we've alluded to this to some extent. You can set aside TIF revenues over time like a reserve fund, so that you're not required to expend them fully each year, and that creates some opportunities. You may be able to borrow less if you want to use the TIF fund to reserve some funds. You can also fund TIF projects with municipal bonds and then have the debt service paid with TIF revenues. And I'm going backwards in the list here, but credit enhancement agreements are on this list simply because sometimes a private entity can undertake a project that the town cares about, and you do that through a credit enhancement agreement to allow them the use of some TIF revenues for that. Yeah.
So if I understand this correctly, we could use TIF funds to reduce our debt by paying off municipal bonds. Is that right?
If the project that the bonds financed qualified under the statute, yes. We got it. Okay, well, so I'm not going anywhere, but I'm going to the next set of slides that are that are directly following here. Karen, it comes right after. And Karen's going to now talk about these tiers as applied to Scarborough budget.
This is the applied theory piece of this. So, and I want you guys to think about the TIF district that you have two levers, if you will, and Sean has already talked about them. One lever lever is what percentage you're going to capture, what, how much of the value. The other lever is what projects you have are you going to put into your pocket of things that you can spend money on? So both of those things work together in order to do your different projects. So I'm going to relate back to the tiers that Shauna talked about. And quickly, the tier one types of costs, capital expenses, for instance, if we were putting in the sewer line and we wanted to charge that to the TIF district, we can. That's essentially what we're doing in the Heigis Parkway TIF. We can do professional services costs, like if we had some costs necessary to increase the tip or do anything that we needed some professional services for that were directly related to the tip, we could do that. We can also use some staff costs, for instance, the cost that Nick spends and the cost that of staffing for Ruth as they develop and administer the tip. That can actually get billed to the TIF as well. There's some, you know, other types of things, but in in typically, that's the the types of costs that we're looking at. We don't have any relocation costs at this point, so we're pretty good on those costs inside the TIF, the TIF district.
And just just to be clear, the this language underneath each of the tiers comes directly from statute. So this is not staff, we're just kind of drilling down a bit further, so you get a flavor of what's qualified under each tier.
Right, so tier two, these are the facilities due to improvements or for improvements or activities within the district, costs of public safety improvements related to the establishment of the district, like we said, utilities, street amenities, public safety improvements. Those types of things can go under there and they can take place. They have to be directly related to the project. Tier three is that really flexible piece, and it's the piece that the state authorizes in order to encourage towns to invest in economic development. And economic development is not necessarily always directly within the district itself. And so those are your economic development programs. You can have some environmental improvements. If you had an arts district, you can do revolving loan funds and some more traditional economic development programs. But you can also look at childcare and adult care, staffing, training, certification. You can look at recreational trails that they have to be related to economic development. And for us, if you took the Eastern Trail, that's definitely related to economic development. We talk about that all the time when we're dealing with the new business. And then quickly, there's some other programs in there, but tier four is what Shauna has spent some time with in terms of trying to understand what that piece is.
So real quick, just a clarifying question. This is important to realize, this is within the district, right? So one of my immediate concerns is, you know, what about Oak Hill a lot of times? But Oak Hill qualifies just as much as the Downs does for a lot of these.
Absolutely.
And I think that's important for all of us to recognize, it's in that huge district. It doesn't matter where the revenue is coming from.
Right.
Right?
Right. And that includes, you remember, Route One and traffic improvements there. So there's a lot of things that that can be approved there. And so what I did is I just went back through the FY twenty-two budget, and I said, all right, let me pull some things. This is probably in no way everything that could get billed, but these are the the sort of obvious pieces. Again, we're talking about some town staff salaries that go with administering administering the district, some legal costs, those types of things. There are some project costs, we're calling, this is the outside but directly related to the district. And that, those two projects there, I would say come under our approved list of of items that are traffic-related improvements. You're looking at traffic controls along Route One. So then you've got project costs unrelated to the district, but anywhere in town. So SEDCO, operating expenses, other staff involved in economic development time. We can take five percent, ten percent of Combs' time, because he absolutely sounds to meet with potential clients and all of that. Jay does as well. Eastern Trail improvements, the Highland Avenue Bike Ped Study that is in the CIP. And then there's the Business License Module, it's in the CIP, it's not funded yet. Some portion of the daycare. We wouldn't be able to bill costs that are being reimbursed, but we could bill potentially some of the cost of the hub itself, the the building. And then we also talk about a portion of the debt service on that public safety building. Has to be related to the impact on the portion that might be related to the Downs. But I think we can easily begin to look at that population, employment, all of that that's associated with the Downs. And then again, we don't have any items identified in tier four yet in terms of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
So just looking forward to some big capital investments we have to make, like the library expansion and the consolidated schools. Would those qualify as projects where we could use some of the TIF funds or at least the using the portion of the debt service? Are using it to pay some of the the bonds that we would want to take out? So our expansion, I think of that as a economic development opportunity, based on what I've seen, where I know Nancy's thinking about how you use some of that space as a place for private entities to come and do business and do some commerce.
I'm going to say, I think there's potential. I'm going to say, I think there's potential, Shauna always wants us to be very careful about this. So, you know, particularly if the library was leasing space in the Downs. We might be able to, to make a case for that. And I think, you know, a couple of other things that, that we've talked about. I don't, as long as we're doing it in the concepts of leasing the, the structure and building and leasing the structure.
I, I would just offer the, to the extent you're building a facility and some portion of it is going to be dedicated for use by local businesses. I, I would be comfortable trying to make a prorated argument there. I've never seen libraries just sort of as a general premise go through, I think that would probably not work. And schools. Schools don't qualify as a general rule. Job training programs can qualify, so to the extent there's some connection to jobs created or retained in the town of Scarborough with a job training program, that would work.
Shauna, could you tell me why a portion of the debt service from the public safety building may qualify and a portion of the debt from a new consolidated school may not qualify?
The public safety facilities are called out in the TIF statute. And so there's, and actually in a couple of different ways. One of the ways is new as of just a couple of years ago in the statute. So they're really trying to allow for municipalities to, you know, to the extent we can make the case that it's related to economic development. The need for that facility was related to the business development. And to some extent, I think we can always make that argument.
Not all of it, but I think some portion, some percentage of.
Right. Okay, so then I took those costs that we just looked at. Again, I'm focused really on fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And I said, all right, well, I could find within the budget, project expenses within the current, that's in the current development program. Traffic, economic development, those types of, those two categories. There is about seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that I could identify. Part of that was the, again, the traffic light signalization improvements. So there's that. Now, those are in the actual.
Operating budget.
Operating budget. And then there was an additional six hundred thousand that was in the five-year CIP. So, and I separated it out, it was in the five-year CIP, but also in the operating budget, I just used the operating budget. And so there's a, several programs that are in that category as well. Then there were some project expenses that we have, it's, they're not really in the current development program, but we probably could apply some funds to it. That really was the cost of the hub, that two hundred thousand dollars there. Again, there's an offset of fees that pay for the salaries and all of that. But anything that's not paid for, we could apply some of that as well, and I allocated about two hundred thousand. Then we have some additional project expenses, not included in the current development program, but we're in the five-year CIP. And that was another three hundred thousand dollars or so. And then we took fifteen percent of the debt service for the public safety building and came in at two hundred thousand on that. So there's a, a pool of different expenses that were in fiscal year twenty twenty-two or in our current five-year CIP. And then we're going to move to Nick, who's going to talk a little bit about what the numbers are.
Big John had a question.
Oh, sorry, John. He's trying to talk so fast.
Go back one more slide, Paul. So this, uh, yes, this, so when you were talking, I think maybe actually one more where she listed out. So, no, you were there. That was, yeah, so I think of this as like a menu of things that we
Yes.
decide is, are worth saving for, right? We're not ready to appropriate funds for them, but it's worth, instead of paying a sixty percent tax on new money coming in, we put that in the bank and at some future date, we could spend money on these. We don't have to spend money on those things. And then when you go to the next slide, the budget, this is an example of, well, had we built that savings account, we could have spent, we could have paid for these things with those funds.
Two point, whatever it is, two point two million, right?
Yeah, just keep in mind, it's not as if we've lost any time. You know, we don't have funds to support that level of expenditure. I would say that I think this, this conversation is very appropriate now because by the same token, we've not come accustomed to having significant new money flowing to the general fund. So to the extent that we want to kind of shift that and decided to put it into a, you know, shelter through the TIF, we, we've, it's not sufficient to the point that it's going to be painful to make that switch. If we wait longer and this thing really starts to pick up steam and produce value and therefore tax revenue, when you do that decide, it's going to hurt. Because you're, you're accustomed, it's built into our general fund budget to support our operations. So this is really timely to have this conversation in the next year or so.
And we really have a little bit more relax, it's a three-year average, right? So we're really, we're still firmly in the beginning process of all of this, right?
And remember, I think our goal was to only take things that were already in the budget and being paid for by the general fund. We didn't add anything new. We're not suggesting any new programs, we're just saying, these are the things that are related to economic development. And the, you know, the, the state intended this program to help you fund.
I mean, a, as a result of that being the dynamic, it actually wouldn't hurt you very much in a circumstance where you decide to capture in one year, because you're really going to just be paying for something out of TIF revenue that you would have paid for on the general fund. I mean, it depends upon, you know, sort of the timing of different expenditures.
So the, the simplest one, the lowest hanging fruit is things in our operating budget. We are spending tax dollars today, hundred, you know, a hundred percent of that dollar is going to support what we, we've agreed is a important priority. If, the difference is if you use TIF dollars, the, the shelter benefit really, you know, exponentially helps, you know, that equation, obviously.
Right. Think of it as, you may have spent fifty thousand dollars, but because of the, the tax shift, you're going to get fifty-seven percent, fifty-eight percent of that value back in, in your, in your revenue sharing funds. So you're not shifting that cost anywhere, you're still paying for it. What you're getting is a better distribution of funds. So you're getting more money in your other three funds that Sean has talked about.
With the exception of paying less funds to the county, it's just a little.
Yeah, that's true.
Because the county doesn't reimburse us, but revenue sharing and general purpose aid comes afterwards. Counsel Johnson, did you have a question?
No, I'm going to go watch the finance committee meeting. It's the proper. Because I'm a little confused. I understand the sheltering of the value, okay? Because that was the first three or four slides in here. I don't understand the benefit of sheltering tax dollars. That's, I'm, I'm losing it somewhere, so help me.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm glad you asked the question. So if you capture the value, then the resulting TIF revenues, sometimes people consider that to be captured TIF revenue just because it relates to the captured value. We're not talking about a different concept, it's the same concept. It, it's more appropriate to say we're capturing the value. And then there's TIF revenues associated with captured value.
Okay, so if the shift, the tax shift really is driven by the value and not the revenue, what is the benefit to be paying for certain items out of a separate account and not the general fund?
It, it is in fact related to the fact you've captured the value. That's what gives you the ability and the restriction of using those TIF revenues on only TIF projects. So in order to get the benefit we've been talking about of the capture, then you have to use the TIF revenues on certain projects. So that's the exercise Karen's been going through. You know, what are we already using general fund revenues on? That instead we could use TIF revenues on, and then the TIF revenues will relate to captured value that then will result in this tax shift savings.
And if you capture the value, you must then create a separate account for the taxes on that value. So the capturing the value can't be done without then differentiating the taxes that are collected on that new value. So you can't just capture and freeze it. So I mean, but we're, I mean, what we're trying to do is say Scarborough is worth five billion dollars. Let's have, let's have the downtown area build up, but we'd still be able to say to the state that Scarborough is still only worth five billion dollars. Right, it's actually worth six billion. But as far as the state's concerned, we're only five billion now. So then our proportion of all those taxes is based off five billion instead of six billion. So that's, I mean, that's the, you know, that's the bottom line to it. And then that's how our revenue sharing is based off what our valuation is compared to everybody else. And the assistant we're getting from education is based off the, is based off that as well. So we're just trying to.
Five million is what it's based on.
What's that?
It's based on the lower five million in that.
Yeah, right.
Five billion in that.
Five billion, right. So we're just trying to keep that five billion as close to five billion as possible, even if we go to seven million.
The, one thing I'm having a hard time getting my head around is, among many other things. But one thing in particular is that I, I'm struggling with what term, what timeframe are we talking about? Does this mean forever after? Does it mean for just this year we're getting benefits or for a period of thirty years under a CEA? I'm having a really hard time with that.
Shauna, can I try to answer it just to see if we understand it? I think we're talking about for about twenty-seven more years, because that's the, that's the length of the TIF district, because three years have gone by. And we're also assuming that we do not dip below minimum receivership as well. So if we dip back into minimum receivership, this exercise is slightly less fruitful, as in a lot less fruitful. But if we stayed above minimum receivership, this is about a twenty-seven year exercise.
So that's how you would frame it, given those conditions?
Correct, right. But if we go back to minimum receivership, this whole tax shift burden, the tax shift benefit, excuse me, isn't nearly as sexy as it is right now. And, and three years ago, that's exactly where we are. There was no differentiation between, between the TIF district and the rest of town. There wasn't any quote benefit to sheltering, not nearly as much benefit, I should say. Was that good?
Yeah. I don't know, did it answer your question?
Yeah. I have other questions. Put them in the parking lot for now.
But is it, is it?
He's the parking lot attendant.
He's in the parking.
Another parking lot, no. So just thinking about that though, like, how flexible is it for us to be able to, like, say, we wanted to go to like sheltering twenty percent instead of the three percent we have today? But then the dynamic changes, the situation changes back to what it was. Do we have the flexibility to quickly shift back? Or like, how long does it take to like make those changes if we wanted to say, you know, for the next five years, we're hoping to be at twenty percent? But if things change, can we quickly change it back to three percent or a lower percentage?
Yes, so, so you can amend anytime, like we were saying before, similar to adding new projects. You can do an amendment process, change the percentage of captured value, and it can be anything from one to a hundred. There is a feature, and we can talk more about the possibility of using this. I think the city of Portland and city of Bangor both use this to some extent. Where there, the city council, in those circumstances, there's a feature of the statute that allows them to drop the percentage of capture without going through an amendment for a particular budget year and send a notice to DECD that they've done that. So we could consider a process like that, and it just allows you more flexibility if you're really on top of this on an annual basis. Like, well, we need a little more for the general fund, we don't have a lot of priorities this year. You have to be cognizant of the fact, though, that once you, let's say you're at fifty and this one year you say, we're going to just go to twenty, we have a budget issue. The next year, it's going to be really hard to go back to fifty, because your general fund will, will have been expecting that. So that's the caution I have around that process, but it is, it has been used elsewhere. I have been told that it has eroded the ability of, of those cities to, to use the capture again.
Right. But it's the same process, we would go to DCD and in this case, initially look to raise the percentage, we would go back to them and look to reduce the percentage.
Yeah.
All right, Nick, you got ten minutes?
Sure.
All right.
He's got the good stuff.
Well.
It's all been good, but these are some concrete numbers which might give it an example of had fiscal year twenty-two, had the capture rate been different in the downtown district, these are some of the actual numbers. The first slide, we don't have to go back to necessarily, this is the second. I just showed out the different categories of captured versus not captured. But this slide here, which you already have up, hits home the point of the tax shift loss versus available to the town at each captured percentage in the downtown.
This, there's a slide before this, right?
That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I think.
But I was trying to.
If you want to just skip to that one, you could, right?
That's what I, okay.
I'm going to skip to that one then.
Yeah.
In the interest of time.
And we can always go back to the other one if you have questions, because it kind of shows where these numbers came from.
Yeah.
This is what tells the story, this page here. The two lines in green on the top two sections, A and B, is what's going to be the net benefit of, to the town. But how do we get there? So at the actual fiscal year twenty-two, three percent, that whole column is what actually happened in the downtown district at the fifteen oh two tax rate. Thirty-four thousand roughly is in, went to the downtown TIF development fund. And then the forty percent of capture in the Downs district of their increased value is the same across all scenarios, that does not change it. If you go down to the tax revenue to general fund, from the increased assessed value, when it's not captured, so the, the part not in the Downs, it's ninety-seven percent. The part in the Downs, it's, you know, not forty-three, but the opposite of that, fifty-seven, yeah.
Coincidentally, fifty-seven.
So that's what accounts for that number at the three percent. Then you see that negative four oh five, that's with that whole fifty-seven to fifty-eight cents on the dollar that we're, we're saying we lose or have to, you know, end up not receiving from the state or have to pay back to the county as a result, result of not sheltering the value. And the amount below is the forty-two cents on the dollar that we do get to keep and spend. So you see, the more we shelter at each percentage, three versus ten through up to, through a hundred, if you go all the way up to a hundred, that kind of mirrors Shauna's earlier slides of the different bar graphs where it was all green, meaning net benefit to the town. We didn't lose any in that shift equation. We got the full dollar for every dollar of increased value to spend. The only difference is it had to be on the approved cost. You, when you don't shelter it, you do get the forty-two cents on the dollar for general fund, but you're losing, you know, in this instance, four hundred thousand to that every fifty-seven cents on the dollar. I was trying to gloss over quickly, so I don't know if it made sense, but people say that the, the red line there is what we're trying to get across, that money that could have been used by the town for an approved TIF purpose was just lost to other communities or paying in county taxes.
So Nick, just to kind of bring this back, because we had a ten million dollar project example.
Yes.
This is essentially a fifty million dollar project example, because the increased assessed value in the Downs is about fifty million dollars.
The increase in the whole district is seventy-six million.
Seventy-six million dollars, yeah, I was looking at the not capture, sorry. So this is essentially Shauna's bar graph that had the ten million. This is played, there was seventy million dollars worth of value created last year in the Downs.
In the total life of the district.
In the total life of the district, okay. That's right, that's true, because every year, it's, yeah. So that, so that's just essentially multiplying all Shauna's numbers by seven.
And another point that I've heard people, including Tom, if he wants to embellish, make, we're at the start of this project really ramping up. So at the three percent, you know, we wouldn't have seen much anyway, but even if it was a hundred percent, the projects have just started ramping up. The Downs and beyond, the, the value is about to double, triple. So the benefits of sheltering will be far greater, instead of losing four hundred thousand, you might lose a million, you know.
So this, the, the red line really translates into dollars what the, what the loss to the town is. Loss by way of less subsidy for education support and revenue sharing and more money we're, we're paying for county operations. I guess you could argue that that four oh five, you know, i- is added to the tax rate and all of us taxpayers are, are paying that bill.
Especially, especially if you're rationalizing it with the examples Karen gave, things that were already funded. So, you know, those could have been funded with that four hundred thousand, had it been a hundred percent capture because they're in the TIF district allowable cost, you know? If that laundry list increases of allowable cost.
Yeah, I do think this, that's another really important benefit of this graph is thinking about how, what the costs are of Karen's approved list or potential approved list and what, what is available there and, and. And what what is available there and and recognizing it's gonna grow.
Yeah, and there's nothing magical about three, ten, twenty, fifty, a hundred, we did it just for illustrative purposes, it can be, as Shauna said, anything from one to a hundred. So that's the basic point we want to leave you with, and we appreciate there's probably still more questions, is that. You know, there's a way to really maximize and be strategic about how we operate within. This TIF district in particular, because it really is the economic engine and will be for the next, you know, couple of decades presumably. There'll be other, certainly development townwide, but this thousand acres is likely to be where most of it occurs.
Well, it could be a tax stabilization engine, we're just not using it to its full potential, certainly, right? Just a point of clarification about, say, you were to utilize the example of a hundred percent capture. In the area with the Downs. You can't, so forty percent would go to them, sixty percent to the town. If there's not part of a CEA and another part, hundred percent to the town TIF District Fund. There are other CEAs in the downtown TIF that are barely started and will start to be on the books in the coming year. The Jocelyn Place, the Avesta Route One. So if that's a hundred percent capture, seventy-five to them, twenty-five percent to the TIF Downtown District. At the different percentages of ten, twenty, there's more administrative figuring out who gets paid first, but the. Prior obligations need to be paid out first to the CEAs. And to that point, and I'm not, this is, I'm not gonna make. But to that point, when you, when you do look at our, if we capture a hundred percent of the of the increased assessed value in a TIF district. You are, even with a forty percent CEA, or in the Jocelyn case, Jocelyn Place's case, seventy-five percent CEA. There's actually more money going, still more money going to the bottom line, as long as it's located in the TIF district. Than if the same exact project was going on outside of the TIF district.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
And that's what this illustrates, this graph illustrates here, I'm not suggesting we're gonna run around giving free money away. Did you hear that, I'm not suggesting. But what I am saying. But what I am saying is that what that does is. It actually, the bottom, it gives you that flexibility, the bottom line actually even minus the forty percent is still better, as if it was outside the TIF district. John, I'm sorry, you were, had your hands up.
Yeah, no, that's actually similar point that I was trying to make, can you go back to the red line?
Yep.
Nick, I'll put you on the spot, I don't, I think I know close enough to the, do you know what we refunded to the Downs this year for the CEA?
Yeah, just give me a moment, let's see. Was it? It hasn't happened yet, but four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so if we'd have captured a hundred percent this year, we would have paid for the Down C- CEA.
And it's right up there, actually, four oh seven, sorry, I looked on. And it's the same across every scenario, that does not change, what changes is how much of the rest of it we get to keep.
Right, and Paul, that's why, when you look at TIPS and other communities, a lot of times there's the community's like fifty percent right off the bat. Because they know that they're gonna make it back. So it's like a break even point for them, and that's why they were, you know, when we were comparing us when we were a minimum receiver. We just couldn't do that because we didn't benefit from the tax shift.
Have that shelter benefit. The other thing to keep in mind, the C- CEA obligations we have with the Downs, with the Jocelyn Place, with Avesta and others. Those are contractual obligations, they are gonna get paid unless we renegotiate those deals. So this conversation is around everything but that, and this is totally unilateral within your control. Subject to statute limitations, the limitations of the statute. So I just want to be clear that CEAs are not part of this conversation, those have already been decided on. We will pay them for the terms of that, and this is what do we do with the balance, and how do we maximize our benefit?
Another administrative point, maybe Shauna can speak to the timing, but for assessing purposes. Having things happen before April first of a given year. Is usually the easiest way for me to administer something without having to jump through hoops or answer questions. So if it's, if you're able to figure out whether or not you want to increase the percentage of capture, having it be in the next few months. Before April first would be advisable, I would think.
Yeah, it's actually required that it occur before the end of February.
Okay.
That that then we can submit to the state on March first, according to their deadline.
So we just put that out there to say, you know, not to suggest we need to rush to do something, we we need to kind of all go along at a pace that makes sense to all of you. But if we want to take advantage as soon as next year, we're looking at kind of a February timeframe, which, you know, may be doable, depending on your appetite.